All right, thank you for coming to our general meeting. We are going to begin our general meeting. I'm going to invite Deputy Chief Stromberg up to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of our public safety community, both police and fire sacrificed their lives too frequently for our safety. So at this time before we begin, I'd like to have you join me in a moment of silence for our fallen public safety members. Thank you. Sadly, we're not immune from that here in our community either, and we're grateful that the two members of Salt County Sheriff's Office who were injured the other day are now safe and recovering at home. We wish them the best. At this time, I'd ask the audience to please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Harriman City Police Department Honor Guard. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, coach. Over, face. Over, march.
May be seated, thank you. I'd like to thank our department and the Honor Guard particularly for the respect that they show our community and this body and this building with the respect they show our flag and the steps they take to bring honor to those who serve our community. We're very appreciative of it. We will move on to item 5.2, which is City Council Comments and Recognizations.
So I have one really quick. I just want people to know how grateful I am to see your face. It is beautiful to see smiles and just to feel there is a wonderful difference in being able to see smiles on people's faces. So I just welcome that. I never want to minimize the loss that's been associated with the pandemic, but super, super grateful to see people's faces.
Councilman Smith or Henderson, do you have any comments or recognitions?
I don't have anything right now. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We will then move on to item six, which is the public comment portion of our meeting. Audience members may bring any item to the City Council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing this council may submit a comment by emailing recorder@harriman.org or by visiting harriman.org/agendaandminutes, where there is a link to fill out an online public comment form. Your statement would then be read into the public record. At this time, if anybody would like to make a public comment that is in the audience, please come up to the podium and state your name, and we'll begin your two minutes. Okay, seeing none, I'll turn the recorder, see if we have any electronic. We have none. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting. We move on to item seven, which is City Council Board and Committee Reports.
So I'll go ahead and report on the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. That would be why I was late to the work meeting. We were conducting that meeting. We have just adopted a tentative budget, and that's available to the public to review. We also issued a supplemental resolution today for a bond for $115 million. So we received no public input on that, so apparently that's a good thing. Obviously, we need to move forward with infrastructure for water. It's critical for life and for our needs. And there's explosive growth, as I'm sure everyone in this community is aware of, which necessitates ramping up in infrastructure, which takes money, and hence the reason for the bond. So that was approved today, and we'll be moving forward in that. I'll reiterate what Chief said today while we were talking about wildland fire. We are just in a critical situation with drought. I've said this every time I report. But it's really important to practice conservation, even things like buffering your own homes. If you are in those urban wildland interfaces, make sure you have good buffers around your homes so that we don't lose homes, and we do a good job of maintaining our properties so that we don't have those types of issues. We're seeing that we had a nice little blast of hot weather, which everyone enjoyed, except for what it does is it starts to snow melt, which doesn't typically reverse. Even if it gets a little cold, we still have the snow melt. So, which is interesting because we haven't seen the stream rise, but that's because the ground was so dry. It's just acting like a sponge and absorbing the moisture that's been melting right now. We are getting pretty close to saturation, which is a good thing. But so we'll start to see the streams rise a little bit, but we are having an early snow melt. So again, we'll continue to contribute to this drought and the shortage in our water. So just continue to be mindful of that, continue to practice good conservation. There's great programs for Flip Your Strip and Localscape-type things that will help reduce the amount of water that's necessary for land and landscaping, those types of things. I know it's pretty fun to look out and see acres and acres of Kentucky bluegrass, but it's in Kentucky for a reason and not in Utah. So we need to just be really cognizant of those types of things, and then we'll be able to meet our water needs. But please understand that this all ties into what we discussed earlier with our firework restrictions and those types of things. It's just critical. Now, we have ground saturation, so what happens is we're going to get spring grass. And if we don't get sustainable moisture, which we typically don't, it's going to dry up and become really prime fuel for fires. So we have these conversations not to suppress people's desires to celebrate and things like that, but because we simply live in a desert. And we just have to remember that. And our water usage should reflect that. We will have some water rate increases this year. Our average for the wholesale water is about 2%. Each city differs a little bit. The budget has worked out very well with the water district. They make sure that we're not subsidizing other cities. So the program is designed city-specific to make sure that whatever is averaged out over your peak usage, and that's how the rate increases are estimated and designed. So I think Harriman was about a 1.7%. On average, the wholesale is 2% increase, and I think we hit about 1.7%. So that's not to say that that's exactly what our retail customers will receive on their end, but obviously, as we have to pay more for water, then the end consumer has to pay a little bit more, too. So it's just incumbent upon all of us to be water-wise. Thank you.
So I had Association Municipal Council's meeting earlier this week. We had a great presentation, some comments from members of the governor's staff. It was really interesting. Just to share a couple statistics that came along with that meeting was, in 2019, the governor's office received 19,000 calls. In 2020, the governor's office received 68,000 calls. Just a slight uptick, as you can imagine with COVID-related issues and mask mandates and all that kind of stuff. They were really busy last year. Couple updates is that 83% of those age 65 or over in the state of Utah are now vaccinated. So I thought that was a great milestone, something to acknowledge. That vulnerable group is now largely vaccinated. We recently got some concerns about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. There were a little short of 7 million, something 6.8 million doses in the United States distributed. Out of those 6.8 million, there were six cases of some blood clots being developed. But in Utah, most of the vaccines that we have are the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines, and so this pause with the J&amp;J vaccine isn't a major obstacle. But because it is a single-dose vaccine as opposed to a double-dose vaccine with the others, it does limit the ability to use that in some of our more vulnerable populations or some of our harder-to-reach populations. It would be a lot easier, especially with the homeless, if you could just go out and give them one dose, and they could be vaccinated. So there's some hope that that will clear up here pretty soon. I think that the information is that the blood clots that are provided have to be treated differently than traditional blood clots. So as long as they can get that information out to the medical community and inform them of what needs to happen, they feel it would be safe to start moving forward with that again. There is some still questions about the length of efficacy of the vaccines, and they just haven't received enough information about whether or not there will need to be additional boosters. So just be aware that those conversations are ongoing and looking for that stuff. There are two comments I want to make. Number one is, as the mask mandate has been lifted, and there are those that are choosing not to wear masks, and that is raising some concerns for some members of the community. The guidance we received from the governor's office was, for those that have concerns about exposure, the recommendation is to wear a better mask. To get an N95 or KN95 mask, which actually does filter out 99.98% of all viruses. And so we would recommend that move from the cloth mask to a really medical-grade
And wear it correctly.
Better mask, and wear it correctly
Correctly.
And have it a firm seal all the way around. That will protect you far better than cloth masks worn by two people. That being said, I think there's an opportunity for a comment here. When the mask mandate is a matter of public policy or government action, I think it's really helpful and meaningful and important for citizens to make their opinions and positions known to government leaders to influence the decisions that they're making. When that is no longer a mandate from the government, and it is a matter of personal choice, telling somebody they're right or wrong by their opinion, I'm going to share something that my wife said I thought was really wise. Telling somebody their opinion on the matter is wrong is like going into their own home and telling them that their color on their wall is wrong. It's just, there's no place for it. It's completely out of societal norms and peaceful decorum of a human being here. I would say that if you go to a place of business, or to a home, or to any private property, and there is a requirement that they have posted to wear a mask, wear a mask. If they don't post, and they're not worried about it, and you choose not to wear a mask, or you choose to wear a mask, that's your responsibility and choice as a free American citizen to make that decision. But for goodness' sakes, be respectful of each other, those differences of opinions. And if somebody chooses to wear or not choose to wear a mask, be respectful of that individual's choices. You are not aware of all of the reasons for or against why they're making those decisions, and you don't know why a business may or may not choose to make those decisions. They could have vulnerable employees. They could have family members of those employees that are vulnerable, and they're choosing to do what they think is right. So whatever you're doing out there, be respectful of each other. And there just were some reports of some problems. And that's just beneath us as a society to have those kind of problems. We need to do better. So that's all my report from that.
Councilman Henderson or Councilman Smith, do you have any things to report on?
Mayor, this is Clint. Very quickly, at the first of this month, I had our monthly League of Cities and Towns Board meeting. That was primarily a legislative recap from, and we did have a couple of our legislators there that were there to talk about some of the specific bills. I'm not going to belabor that point. We've had a very good recap from our own city staff at the conclusion of the session and those things that affect our city. And then I know that we will be covering more of that for those that are attending the league conference next week. The only other report I have is got to participate in our Military and Veterans Committee last night for the city. I'm very impressed with the volunteers that we have serving on that committee and the efforts that they are putting in place right now. And just tell you that I'm excited with the prospect of upcoming city events, again, with kicking off here with the Memorial Day breakfast and the Memorial Day ceremony that we will have over at the city cemetery, which will lead quickly into our Harriman rodeo and then important Harriman Days. I'm just excited about the prospect, again, of being able to have some normalcy, to be able to get together again as a community and celebrate, and looking forward to the events and the things that the Veterans and Military Committee will be doing to help recognize those who have served and are serving in our community throughout all of those events. Again, I think that it's a very fitting kickoff with that group as we get into Memorial Day, which is really kind of the kickoff of that season. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if we have no further reports from the council, I do have one thing. It was in our work meeting, and we'll get back to it, but just so the council is aware, I did sign on behalf of the city documentation for the water bond to start the official process or completed, or we're well into that process. I'm sure staff will be giving us an update with the water bond information later, but that took place earlier this week. All right, we will move on to reports, presentations, appointments. First is item 8.1, which is our Unified Fire Authority Annual Report. So we'll invite Chief Woodson up to the podium.
Thanks for having me again. It's a pleasure to be here. First off, I want to say thanks to our partners in public safety, Harriman Police Department. The presentation this evening was fantastic, and it always gets me. I don't know why. I do know why, but well done. You guys are excellent partners in public safety. So I'm here this evening to present our annual report for 2020. We can go ahead and move on. Does this work now?
It should.
Let's try it out. Nailed it. Excellent. Okay, so this is in general overview of UFA statistics in general, and I'll zero in to Harriman City municipality statistics here in just a minute. But in general, UFA responded to over 30,000 incidents, and that's an increase of about 10% over 2020. Just about 60,000 unit responses, and what that means is, you know, some of our calls require multiple units to respond to them. Medical calls being one of the most common, where you're going to get a BLS unit as well as an ambulance transport unit. So that's why you see a larger number there with unit responses. And again, that number up about almost 5%. Total fire inspections up about 4%. Special enforcement, fire investigations, we saw a decent increase of 26%. And then they did have a few arrests, 10 arrests that they had. 96 special enforcement explosive-related responses, and that was a significant increase of 113% last year. And then SWAT paramedic deployments of an increase of 35%. The data that I have access to doesn't really zero in to the why or the nature necessarily of those calls. So I can't really specifically say what they are or why, besides the explosive-related responses. That's a little bit concerning that such a significant increase there. UFA does provide SWAT paramedics that are trained in SWAT, and they respond to those SWAT deployments as medical. They're part of the SWAT team, and that's what those are related to. 153 total community events with almost 30% decrease in those events, and we kind of know why. We absolutely know why, because of COVID-19. And then 312 station tours, drive-bys. And I would say the majority of those were drive-by. We had to drastically change how we were interacting with the public. Some really good things that came out of that, though, was that we could provide interaction with the public just by driving by. So birthday parties, or family parties, or Fourth of July, stuff like that. It was actually really refreshing to get out there and see how they were interacting different, but still able to interact. Another thing was the Christmas parade, which, this is my opinion, was a huge hit, I think. There was a lot of people out there. It was cold, but we saw a really good response from the residents. The crews really enjoyed it. I think it was a really good event. We had 139 wildland deployments covering nine different states. Seven USAR deployments with 180 total personnel. USAR is Urban Search and Rescue. This is a FEMA-funded group that responds to large-scale national disasters such as hurricanes, as well as some of the fires in California and Oregon. And then the five EMAC deployments. EMAC is Emergency Management Assistance Compact. This is a state-to-state request. So when a state declares an emergency, they can directly contact adjoining states and ask for direct assistance with personnel and resources. And we had five of those deployments in California and Oregon with a total of 35 firefighters responding. Nine ECC, Emergency Communications Center activations, one of the biggest and lengthiest ones being the COVID-19 response. We had 31 new firefighters that completed recruit school last year and are a year into it, and they're doing really well. We have about 33 in the camp right now that are about halfway through, going to graduate in about a month and a half. We saw 17 promotions, those listed. One of them just happens to be myself, and then got the liaison position. This is about mid-year, so I've been in this position here coming up on, what is that, almost 10 months-ish? So it's flying by. Anyway, several promotions there. We had a handful of retirements as well. And then we hired 35 part-time EMS staff, 15 of those being paramedics. Within Harriman City area here, we have two fire stations, 103 and Station 123. 103 is staffed with four-person crew. It's a medic engine, meaning that they have advanced life support capabilities. 123 staffed with six, that's four people on the medic engine, so ALS-capable, and as well as an ambulance, two-person ambulance. It's a medic ambulance, so ALS-capable for all of those apparatus. This right here is a picture of Medic Engine 103, and it's just stationed right here, Station 103. Looks a little bit different, and the reason why is because this has some wildland capabilities. Four-wheel-drive, off-road capability, pump-and-roll for those wildland-type fires. There's five of them in service throughout UFA. One of them happens to be here in Harriman City. These are our total responses and a five-year history of those, and you can see by this graph that we are steadily going up this year. Total responses, 1,475. And from the previous year, it's about a 19% increase in our calls. This is total calls. This is not emergent, what we call emergent or priority-one type calls. This is total call volume that our crews respond on. With the building and how fast we're growing, I just anticipate these numbers to continue to go up.
So you'd say this is in line with population increase?
Absolutely.
You're not seeing a concerning spike, other than just we're getting bigger?
Not a concerning spike, no. This totally is in line with what you would anticipate giving our growth.
Will you tell me the difference in color, please? There's 718, 757.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
What's the difference in the two? You have it broken out in two different colors.
Emergent and non-emergent. So about half of them are those emergent and priority-one calls. So as an example, we would say a house fire or a heart attack, things like that. Those are priority-one calls, very critical time-wise, and we want to identify those. In a couple slides, I'll talk about that, that time is a big issue for us. So we break those out on calls that we don't necessarily have to go 1039 or lights and sirens to versus those that we do. This is just the monthly incident count. It's pretty even across the board. We see an uptick in the July-August area. That makes sense. But it is pretty evenly spaced across all the months there. These are our top five fire dispatches that we respond to, the biggest one being structure fires. There are 20. The next three groups are sort of generalized nature-type calls. A lot of them can fit into the category of some type of outside fire. So we do see a fair amount of outside fires that is compared to the structure fires that we see. And then mobile property being basically vehicle fires. The next one is our EMS or medical responses, the highest one being sick persons. We did have COVID-19, but this is not out of line in what we would typically see anyway. We go on a lot of sick patients. So some of these other calls that we go on, however, typically can end up in the ending disposition could be a COVID-19-related issue, but was not categorized as a sick person. People that are sick, falls, traffic, categorized as a sick person. The sick, people that are sick, falls, traffic accidents, overdose and poisoning, breathing problems, those are our top five EMS or medical-related responses here in Harriman City.
But you didn't see an uptick, like double the numbers, because you just said pretty static numbers?
Well, we did see an uptick in COVID-related calls, but that particular graph did not actually identify just COVID-related calls. So that is just in general. When somebody calls 911, it's coded that they're sick, but not necessarily specifically with COVID-related symptoms.
Right.
It's just in general, they're sick. So that didn't zero in on that.
I guess my point is, I'm just wondering, you just saw just your average number of people, whether it was COVID, whether it was whatever, you just saw pretty much an average number of calls?
Yeah, I would think that 19% increase in call volume included some uptick in COVID-related calls. I didn't zero in on that data at all. I didn't identify COVID responses specifically. If you'd like that data, I can certainly get it and come back to you.
That's good.
But in general, that 19% to 20% increase, there is a portion of that that would be due to COVID-related responses.
Thank you.
Incidents by municipality that's served by UFA. These are the top 10 municipalities here in Harriman is still on that lower end of responses. So there is an uptick in responses, 19%. However, we still are able to manage that with the resources that we have on hand. We're not being overwhelmed by our volume. Oh, no. Double clicked. Okay. Well, they're very similar maps, anyway. This is just a cluster map of all of the calls that we've seen within 2020 and in Harriman City boundaries. A little bit closer look on this in a legend there, you would see that fire and EMS, good-intent calls, service-type calls, those are all broken down in our data. Obviously, the good majority of our responses are medical in nature, and you can see that by this map here. And then also, you can kind of see how they identify some clusters on that map as well. This map right here identifies those clusters, and you can focus in on where are we seeing multiple calls, and how can we better respond to those?
As I look at those, though, what I see is I see a pretty good mapping out of our higher-density areas. So that would almost make sense that where there's more people, there's more calls.
Yep, absolutely.
Except for the Rose Canyon one, it's interesting, on Main Street, Rose Canyon.
So that one, if I...
That's where the bad intersection is.
130?
Isn't that where Beehive Homes is?
Yeah.
That encompasses Beehive Homes as well as those two intersections of Pioneer and Rose Canyon. Yep. Good eye. This is where I was talking about first-due or emergent-type calls, and really where time matters. So we want to make sure, and we want to focus on making sure that when we have an emergent call, that call processing at the dispatch center, that relaying that call to our crews, their, what we call turnout time, and that is from when the tones go off to when they're actually en route to the call, that's our turnout time. And then travel time is all appropriate, given the type of call that we have. So a good majority of our calls, we're right there, close to that 90th percentile. There are some of them that are lengthy in time. Some of them have to do with drive time. Some of them have to do with call processing. But the point I want to bring to this is that this is something that we are focused on as an organization, and that our crews here in Harriman City are focused on, is shortening that time from dispatch, or excuse me, from call received to actual arrival on scene on these emergent calls, because time is critical. Harriman leadership, we'll go through this really quick, but Harriman stations are within Battalion 12. There's three different shifts, Chief Reynolds, Fauks, and Woolsey on A, B, and C Platoon respectively. We just found out that Battalion Chief Ross Fauks is going to be retiring. Good for him. He's going to move on to do some bigger things, I guess. So congratulations to him, but we will be seeing a new face in Battalion 12 on B Platoon shortly. Station 103, this is where I came from on A Platoon. So we have had some turnover here over the last year. These guys are the ones that are wildland duty officers, have an extensive background in wildland fire, and have that delegated responsibility to call for air resources or interagency resources from the state. So Captain Wild, Captain Call, and Captain Lathan. Station 103, Captain Wilkin, Allred, and Alton. Yes, there's probably close to 80 years of experience between these three in the fire service, a lot of experience within this group. There's some good search and rescue experience that is perfectly applicable to us here in Harriman City, and they all have some good background in water, ice, wildland fire responses. Our challenges that we faced over 2020 is obviously COVID-19. It's a big one. Focused on the health and safety of our personnel and really maintaining staffing. This stemmed reevaluating our continuity of operations plan and implementing mandatory staffing policies, and really focusing on how do we manage the effects of losing personnel? It was directly related to COVID-19, but how do we manage that with staffing? So this continuity of operations plan was developed, and mandatory staffing was implemented to make sure that we can maintain our staffing and maintain the service level that is appropriate. We suspended our multi-company training opportunities. This was a big deal. We spent a lot of time getting together as crews to train so that we are proficient at our job. Given COVID-19, we were not able to do that. We have started to re-implement that now, which is great. Paramedics, we are, paramedics are a challenge for us in maintaining our paramedic staffing. They're retiring and/or moving on for whatever reason. And then we haven't had a huge interest in some of our younger firefighters going to paramedic school. So we're focusing on that to maintain our paramedic staffing. We're doing a great job by hiring paramedics in recruit school, as well as offering lateral hires moving forward. Increased span of control for our BC. So in 2020, we got rid of our district chiefs and went with an operations chief. That's Operations Chief Dusty Dern. So went from four battalions down to three battalions. This increased their span of control just a little bit, but it is well-managed. And this organization is a better way to flow information up and down, and has really worked over the course of this last year. We're focused on first responder, mental health and wellness. This is one of our, I think, within UFA, but in the public safety realm in general. This is something that's been overlooked for a really, really long time, and we're in the space where we can start focusing on the mental health of our providers. And then our community events were canceled. This reduced the amount of times we could actually interact with the public. So our accomplishments, I put COVID-19 in there because we did a really good job in maintaining our staffing, maintaining our response, and then providing our folks with proper PPE to respond to these types of calls without exposure. So our logistics division, our operations staff, our administration really did a good job in focusing the effort that was necessary to continue to provide quality service to our residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. All of our 24 ambulances staffed with full-time employees. That transition is happening right now, and so that is a big move. We have captains and battalion chief promotions that are happening. We've promoted about seven captains last year, and we're going through that process right now for battalion chiefs. We had a transition in our dispatch platform from spillman to versa-term. Some of the challenges there of changing a whole CAD system was challenging, for sure, but they did a great job, and it was a smooth transition. We implemented the Intera software platform to assist our crews with incident response. And then the Dark Horse software integration as well, where we can identify needs or future needs of municipalities. We started doing closest forces testing. So instead of just a unit responding because it's within their district, if it is one of those identified emergencies or priority-one calls, we want the closest force. Again, time is a factor. We don't care who goes there. We just need somebody there, and they're fast. They're starting to zero in on that closest forces and identifying those priority-one calls where this makes sense. And then improving our turnout and response times, we've seen significant improvements in our times. And again, that operations chief there. Redid our strength weaknesses, opportunities, challenges for our strategic plan that will be adopted this year. 31 firefighters, again, completed recruit school. Our ISO rating went from, this is Insurance Services Office, went from Class 3 to Class 2. Again, that focused effort on behavioral health and wellness. This last year, Harriman City went through the process to separate from Unified Fire Service Area, and now is a direct member with Unified Fire Authority, creating the Harriman City Fire Service Area here. So and then, again, we adjusted our community engagement. Drive-bys, night of lights, Christmas parade, it's a change, but it was still good to get out and interact with the public when it was possible to do so. Made some really good progress on our strategic plan. Again, this is a three-year plan that is due to be renewed and adopted this year. So not going to go into each one of those, and this will be published in our budget document in July. Yeah, our goals. We're doing great with vaccinations. Over 90% of our personnel, operations personnel, have been vaccinated, which is great. Going through that battalion chief promotional process, we are going to see a new face here, like I said. Continue with our response times. Really focus on those, what we can change. Some of that is out of our control. Drive times, traffic, distance, a lot of that is out of our control. The things that we can control, though, we are focusing on those to improve those times. Getting back to our multi-company training opportunities, offering lateral hire for paramedics to increase our paramedic staffing, and then again, that strategic plan that we'll see in July. So just the key initiatives that we're focusing on is enhancing our leadership, improved emergency service delivery, improved community involvement, and improving our behavioral health for our members. Before we get to the questions, I want to say that, like I said, I got this job in June as the liaison. But before this, I spent over half of my career as a captain in Harriman City at Station 103. It's been a profound pleasure to be here, and I just feel absolutely at home here in Harriman City. So thank you for your time. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the chief?
No, just a big thank you.
Yeah. On behalf of this council, I think I speak for all of them when I express our deep gratitude for all of our public service officers, including all of our firefighters and paramedics and EMTs that serve in our community. I have yet to hear anything other than you guys do a fantastic job, and our residents appreciate all that you do for them. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to the other report which we have for today, which is the Harriman Police Department Annual Report. I'll turn the time over to our police chief, Chief Carr.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It sure is a pleasure to be here tonight to present to you our 2020 Annual Report. Bear with me, we have a lot of numbers to go over, but I've also got some special things planned to kind of break.
You're just going to try to show up the fire chief, aren't you?
Oh, absolutely not, no. I should mention, however...
That's not what I heard.
Chief Woodson and I, I just, I love the guy. I'm so happy y'all picked him. He is wonderful to work with. We have a little bit of a bet going, so this is free time, just so we're clear. Oh, my goodness. The city manager has me on the clock, so I need to move along. Apparently. We have a little bit of bet going who might talk longer, and you all know. The dogs are here, aren't they?
Yep.
Okay.
Everyone started looking.
Yeah, they're all looking past me. Okay, we'll get to that. So tonight, again, we're going to talk about the 2020 Annual Review. John, does this little clicker thing work? There we go. All right. Tonight, you'll hear from me as a department overview. Then you'll hear from Deputy Chief Stromberg, Administration Division Report. He'll be followed by Commander Zach Adams from the Operations Division. Just so you know, this is his first time, so please go easy on him.
Oh, no.
He might be just a little nervous, but he is an amazing guy, right? We picked him for a reason. And then Commander Widmer will close it out with an Investigation Division Report. There we go. I decided to give you a snapshot statistics page, and I feel this is really important because not only does it show some of the things that are of most interest to you, but it also shows a lot about the national conversation that goes on. And I'm going to tie that together for you as we work through this. So bear with me. We saw a 19% increase in calls for service last year. That's a pretty big deal. That's almost 3,000 calls for service, 3,000 calls. We really don't know, and I call this the asterisk year because we don't know. You're going to see some statistics here, much like Chief Woodson showed you, that are really strange. And Cody and I were down in St. George, and we talked to our peers down there. They don't know either. We're really seeing some strange statistics out of it. And I will show you one here in just a moment that is the lockdown look. And it's a, people will study this for some time to come, but I found it very interesting. Here, you'll see the incarceration rate. That's down. We do know that that is because of COVID to some extent, but typically, we trend lower than others, and I was just going to grab that for you. There is only one other municipality in Salt Lake County, Municipality Police Department, Salt Lake County, that books less people than we do, and that's Bluffdale. They have 14,699 residents, and they booked 62 people. We booked 66.
So we have three times the people and essentially the same number of...
The reason that is, is I have an expectation of your police department. That is to fix the problem, and the problem doesn't get fixed by putting people in a box. So we work through a lot of these problems locally and keep that problem from just being a return call right to the house again. So I'm really proud of that number. Like I mentioned, I do think it's a little bit because of COVID, and people were not accessible, but we also saw it trending down, and we hope that it will continue to trend down. All right, use of force. It's a big question. We're down 3.3%. Now, I'd like you to take that in consideration when we look at a 90% increase in calls. That's a pretty good number. And I can break that down for you if you'd like. I have those numbers. The mayor is usually interested in that.
Yes, I am.
So we had, of the 29 uses of force we had in this period, we had a 51.72% show-only. Now, you already know that the Harriman Police Department reports all uses of force, whether it's a show or an application of force. We had a 48% application of force. That equates to a 0.17% of the calls for service where force was used. It's a pretty low number. We trend very, very low in that area. Again, another number I'm very proud of. Let's talk about the crime rate. I'm sure you saw in the paper, and some of you have asked me where we stand in the state and in the nation compared to how safe we are. Statistics are a funny thing, right? They can make you believe one thing when it really doesn't exist. There are places that will create different numbers to hold positions of safety on the polls that go out. We don't do that. I want to know what's happening. I want to know all of it. So I don't restrict officers from on-scene view pulling case numbers. I want to know what's going on. So I can't give you that number, and I'm going to tell you why. These numbers are taken from 2019, 2019 Uniform Crime Report, UCR. The state is a year behind, so these are the numbers we're looking at. In 2019, we're a brand-new police department, and we reported in two ways during that same year. We reported a summary report, and then later, once we were off probation and we were able to upload so many months without errors, we got... to upload so many months without errors, we got to go to NIBRs, and NIBRs is a national incident-based reporting system. We are on NIBRs now, as is every other department in the state of Utah, they're forced to be on it now. There were some that have been on summary for decades, and this is a much better way to do it. So what I'm telling you is next year, we will have a much clearer look of what this really means. As you can imagine, Cody, who loves numbers, was able to string some of those numbers together between the two reports, and you would think it would be easier than it really was. And we came up with one point three-nine violent crimes per one thousand, and nine point oh-nine per one thousand for property crimes. That's not-
Per thousand residents?
Yeah, per thousand, that's not that unusual, we knew that. We knew that we were a property crime-based city, right? And like I've said before, if you have to have a problem, that's the one you want, right? So we are very low in violent crime. This number will probably change next year, and I do suspect that the violent crime number to go up a little bit, but not dramatically. I think that we've got a great community that is respectful. And as we know, a lot of these problems, both violent and property, come to us externally. It is very, very seldom that we arrest somebody for a property crime, say stealing trailers, that live in Harriman. And that's the first thing, Mayor, you always ask me, is it a resident, right?
Yeah. Are property crimes include like package theft?
Yeah, they do. Strangely enough, one of the property crimes under UCR standards that is bizarre to me is they report robbery under the property side of UCR. And I don't quite know why, I'm sure there's a reason for it in the FBI somewhere in some building in Washington DC to decide that that was a good idea, and I don't know why. That's what we're looking at. So as we move down to the lower line, and we'll tie this together in my next slide for you when we talk about the national conversation on police evolution, we look at the sworn retention rate. This is another thing that the mayor likes to talk to me about. Are we keeping the people here, and if not, why? And I can tell you that we have a ninety percent retention rate, which is extremely high, exceptionally high. And we know that of the people that have left, three left because they retired, and that's something we want to see, right? We want people to move on with their lives and retire and enjoy that. One of our retirees is on a farm someplace up in Washington, raising chickens and horses and things.
But essentially, we haven't lost anybody to any other departments.
No, no, we have not. We had one retirement where that individual went on to work for another government but in a civilian capacity, and then the other two retirements were sworn members that left to be in the private industry. They basically taken their retirement check and-
Good for them.
Yeah. We did have a resignation for family reasons, and that's another thing that we expect, that happens from time to time. So these are really, really good numbers in the law enforcement conversation. Three hundred and forty-five people applied for two positions. Now, that number is astonishing, and it should be. There are large agencies in this state of Utah that get maybe seventy or eighty applicants. We got three hundred and forty-five applicants, it's just amazing, and they just roll in day after day that want to come here and work. Why?
Awesome police chief.
Yeah, well, thank you, you're too kind. I think it's an awesome council, it's an awesome administration. We have what they want, right? They want to come here and be comfortable and work. We have great working conditions, we have a community that loves them, they don't experience that in other places. We pay them very well for what they do, and we should, because again, that's a national conversation piece. We have to be able to pay these police officers to get good ones, so that we don't have problems in our community with officers that shouldn't be policing. And you all know me very well, if we have officers that shouldn't be policing in Harriman, we're going to show them the door. That's just the reality of that, and we watch it very closely. But we hire to a very high standard, too, so we don't have those issues. In-service training, the state of Utah requires forty hours minimum post-standard to keep your certification, continuing education. We, last year, I say we, I required them to have eighty, I've doubled the required time. It's really not that big a deal with our guys, because what we learned was they all have over a hundred to a hundred and fifty hours, very typically, over the course of one year, because they're very highly disciplined officers that want that training. One of the things that encouraged me to increase the number was the national conversation. Are we training these guys enough? Be honest with you, forty hours is not enough. If we have a person that has the ultimate authority, they need to be highly trained. And I can tell you right now that your officers are second to none when it comes to training, and I'm going to continue that. I'm going to send them to training, I'm going to get them certified, we're going to continue education, we're going to continue training, that's where we need to be. And you know, I'm passionate about that, and I want to see that happen. Kind of like my colleague Chief Woodison said, our COVID workforce stayed at ninety percent in the seat. We only had a ten percent infection rate in the police department, ten percent. That was over eight months, Zach and Brian are going to talk to you a little bit more about that, but over eight months, we had zero, and then towards that eighth month, we got about a ten percent infection rate. Now, we are vaccinated to about the ninety-fifth percentile in the department, so very good numbers, right? We were very strict about it, and you'll see that in some of the numbering that Cody will talk about. The reason we were strict about that is I could not, we could not be threatened to have people out of the workforce because of a sickness and not be able to go on 911 calls. It's non-negotiable, right? We have to be able to respond. So we took a hard line with it, and our guys, again, the ever-professionals came through for us. So it was an amazing thing to see all of them buckle down and do what they needed to do to provide the safety for our community. So, very proud of them all. All right, police evolution and programming, this is the big discussion, right? Where is it going to end up, and how are we going to get there? To be honest with you, I don't know. This is an ever-evolving conversation, it happens every year, and you guys got the legal rundown from the legislature last time, how many bills do we have, a hundred and something, Cody? For law enforcement? If I'm on one more Zoom meeting with the legislature, I don't know what I'll do. But it was one after another after another to try and see what was coming, because as you know, I like to read the landscape, and I like to be ahead of it. So if it's going a direction, I'm going to get you there before it lands. Just so you know, I will always make sure you're safe, and the plane will come down just like it's supposed to. Reported the governor on police reform, it was prepared by the Department of Public Safety, was interesting. They had advocates for police reform as they wrote from the left, the right, and in the middle. I don't know necessarily what that means, but there were a lot of advocates involved. And those advocates determined there are four categories they needed to identify to represent the nineteen topics of discussion. I've showed you the four categories here in an effort to conserve time, going through all nineteen, I can do that with you if you'd like, but let's talk about the four that you see before you. The first, and probably one of the most important ones for me, is data-driven evidence-based evaluation. Why is that important? Let's not go change things until we know what we need to change, and how much we need to change it, or if we need to change it, right? There are conversations and issues in other parts of the country that don't happen here. So let's not be hyperreactive to some of those things. Let's make sure that we are making decisions based on data that is valid for our community, not for Minneapolis or Atlanta or those other places, we want to see it in our community. Police programming, that kind of ties into that. What are we doing to program our police in a way that is data-driven? I need those numbers first, we're working on that, we're doing a lot of interim study. When we get those numbers, I'll have a better idea of where we need to take this. Community outreach and engagement, that was an interesting piece of that. It's one of those things that always kind of surprises me, and I'll tell you why. It is a natural thing for us to do in Harriman, but shockingly, it's not as natural as one would think in other places, it really isn't. And I have a hard time identifying with that, because your police department is the community, and we are in it all the time. And so when I see that it isn't, and there's that us and them mentality, it really is hard. Now, in all fairness, I have never policed in Chicago or any place but in Salt Lake County, so I don't know, but what I do know is that your police department is in your community. We live here, we coach here, we go to the grocery store here, we are here. And on the back of our trucks, that's why it says, we are Harriman, we're part of this community, right? It's an important thing. And we ended the four categories with policy and law. Does one begat the other? Probably. Do we know which way? Not yet, I need some data. What I do know is that, and you know, is that I am ahead in policy in all regards. The mayor asked, are we ahead in all of the legislation coming down? Yes, we are. We're at the ninety-five percentile. Well, what's the other five percent? It's things we don't know yet, forms and different ways to report, and what portals we're going to use, those kind of procedural, mechanical or technical things we need to do that we don't know yet. But know this, we're ready to respond to it the second it happens, so. Any questions on any of the police evolution and programming? You'll notice that I title it police evolution. I find that that, for us in this community, is a little bit more appropriate term. Reform to me means that we were doing something wrong to begin with, and I don't believe in this community we were. Okay, mental health. As you all know, this is one of my passions. Mental health for me is a lot of the reason police respond to flashpoint calls. Flashpoint calls really are where we end up in trouble, and should we be going on mental health? I will submit to you that we should not. In most cases, it's not, we are not the best people to go. We don't bring the best solution. Why have we gone in the past? Because somebody calls 911 when there's a problem. Now, there are times when somebody's violating the law, or they're violent, that the police need to go. But statistically, and I've stood before you and said this, it's really in the five to ten percentile that police need to be there. So what you see before you today is the mental health calls, and like I mentioned earlier, we had a thousand mental health calls, one thousand last year, where police officers are going to, but these are cases that are referenced as mental health or suicidal. These are flashpoint calls, right? You will see in the blue, that was 2019, pretty standard as what we would expect it to be with the increase more towards November, December. We do have problems that time. Now, in orange, you'll see 2020, and this is why I keep saying, this is that asterisk year. Where do you think those two elevens come from? Those are your lockdown times. Those are when we lose access to our community, those are when we don't know what's going on. These are when businesses are closed, and families don't want other people in their homes. And these people, I call it suffering silence, these people suffer in silence because nobody has access to them to say, there is a problem, and somebody needs to address it. Now, again, too often, it's law enforcement addressing it, but we've become quite adept at it. And I'm going to give you an example. The other day, we received a call of a male with a knife to his neck. You all are somewhat aware of the call as we briefed you on it. This is a male that is in mental crisis, he has a knife to his neck, he wants to die. Now, that's a flashpoint call, we show up and things start to escalate typically, right? Do you know the first thing the sergeant said? We need time and distance, calm down, everybody just calm down, let's talk to the guy. So they did talk to him from outside, and over the course of about an hour and a half, the way it ended was, two officers were able to go inside, he played the guitar for him, they built a rapport, they got trust. The guy can play a guitar, trust me. Hard rock, so I think Mr. Shields, we'd like that, he met. And they walked out with their arm literally around the guy. It was an amazing touching moment that I got to experience, and yet that doesn't happen everywhere, because of who we hire, because of how well they're treated when they work here. And so, I don't worry that those flashpoints will get out of control most of the time. It's those couple that really concern me, that we just can't de-escalate it. Now, and we talk a lot about de-escalation in the national forum. De-escalation's not a thing you do, it's a point you try to get to, right? When they say, well, the police need to de-escalate that, what does that mean? It's a state of being for that other person, and for us. And if police officers are not healthy, and they're not responding well to the trauma they see daily, the multiple traumas they see daily, we have an unhealthy person behind a handgun and an unhealthy person in front of it, there's no good to come of that. So when I talk about mental health being my passion, it isn't just for my community, it's also for my officers. And we can address that, we know what to do, it's how we get there with it, and we're working on that. So when we talk a little bit about, more about mental health, we talk about-
Can you go back to that? I was just seeing that, I know a lot of people have talked about, well, it's because COVID and everybody was locked in, but before the lockdown, it was high, too. So it wasn't just because all of a sudden people are at home, it's an issue.
It's, oh yes, it is absolutely an issue. Honestly, what I think that came from, not being a licensed clinical social worker, therapist myself, I do think that there was a little buildup to COVID. We knew it was coming, people were telling us bad things, everybody's going to die if we don't put on a mask, if we don't close down businesses. I think that created, and you're in the community, you can tell, I think that created some true fear in people that weren't, wouldn't otherwise be affected by it. And I really do think that there was mental health problems created by this. And I think it was created by the alarmists and the media and all of these things that happened, and that's where we ended up, right? And then I do think we had that access denial, right, on the side of it. But yes, you're right, we were building, and this year, as you can see in the green, we're on a trajectory that's got me a little concerned.
Yeah, because even like November, December, the numbers are still crawling up, you know, I just wonder if it's not only associated with that. I just don't want to use it as a scapegoat to say it was only because of that, it just seems like the mental health issues are increasing.
And again, I don't think, and I agree with you, I don't think that we know what happened, to be honest with you, and I don't think we can blame everything on COVID, nor should we. But I do think that it left us with some statistics that we look at and kind of scratch our head and go, that is really strange, and we don't totally know why. But you're right, I don't think that COVID is the great scapegoat.
Sorry, I'm trying to extend you so you lose the bat or something.
I've already lost, I'm not even looking back there at this point.
There's a really interesting, there's a really interesting aspect about these numbers is that, I mean, there's this mode of twenty-four and eleven, you know, from your ear, there's this really consistent number of calls. It is, that's almost mind-boggling to me, I mean, with the ebbs and flows of, you know, the election, with the ebbs and flows of, you know, we're making progress, we're not making progress, you know? All of these things that were going on, and yet, there's almost just no change in the mental health issues that are going on. And I think that the point was made before is, yeah, we're aware that COVID had some impact on mental health, but there's a mental health issue that just is persistent and consistent, and something that is pervasive, you know?
Completely unrelated to COVID, had it never occurred, I'd be having the same conversation right now with you, and quite possibly, the numbers would be different, I don't know, but we would be still having this conversation. And the conversation is that police keep going back, going back, and going back, and what made us the default mental health workers in the field was state statute. We were given the authority decades ago to take a person against their will and do what's called a pink sheet and put them in the hospital for seventy-two hours. That was bestowed upon us, I don't know why, but it was. And maybe it was because we were up at 2:00 AM, I don't know. But it became our job to handle this, and we show up in uniforms with equipment on us and in cars that, when somebody's in crisis, that's scary. That is very, very scary for them, and I get that. But what happens is we go on the call, and we try the best, the best we can to get resources of that person, but then we go on another call, and then the next day, we're back to this same person again. And every time we go back, that risk factor goes up for something bad happening. And we've, I've got to get a circuit breaker in there, it has to happen.
What percentage of these calls were repeat visits?
I don't know, but I can tell you, kind of anecdotally, I guess-
If there's only one person that's getting a call every, you know, twenty-four days a month, obviously, I would explain it, right?
I can tell you that we go again on the same people, and the officers, they know the address, they know the names, and they build rapport with them and those things, but it does, the risk factor and the violence goes up every time we go back. Now, again, there are departments that deal with things in a more escalating manner, I'm proud of my department that the first thing we look at is, where is that de-escalation? Like I said, it's not something that we try and do, it's an endpoint. De-escalation is over there, and I've got to get to it, does that make sense? Everybody says, well, the escalation, you need to use your words and your actions to make this not happen, that's not nearly what it's about. It's about getting to that endpoint with this person that you're trying to bring down from an LA state. Okay, yes, we do go on calls again, but I would suggest that some of those are the same people. What's more concerning is a lot of them are juveniles. We have a lot of juveniles in our community, you can imagine that we go on a lot of mental health issues with kids. Your SROs in the schools, you know how I feel about being in schools, they do a lot of work with the counselors in schools. They keep track of them at home, if they're extended, when they go to home study, they keep track of that for them. So it's a good thing, right? They do the work that should be done. All right, so here's the call action and yearly comparison, and what this is telling us is you'll see in blue is 2019, and in orange is 2020. You'll look down there, you'll see violent arrests, transport to hospital, referred to MCOT, we all know what MCOT is, right? Mobile Crisis Outreach Team. That's a team that is comprised of therapists, and they're mobile. And they come out when we call them, except that they don't always, because the state chose not to fund them again this year. And they are having more and more responses, and they're just being pulled at the ends of the thread. And it's not great, they should be funded, the legislature should have funded this, they did not. So here we are, still, again. Here we have- Here we have officers, the next category where no action ta- no action taken, death and other. I'm proud that our death is very low. It should be no, should be none, it should be zero. That should be the binary of all of this. There's ones and zeros and that should be the zero. Unfortunately, it's not. But what is concerning to me is the highest column there is officers. We have officers out doing therapy. So we're moving past this. These are, um, numbers that I thought you would be interested in seeing where we're at with the mental health state. Uh, and we'll work through this as the future comes. Any questions on this? Okay. Um, I would like to introduce Deputy Chief Cody Stromberg. You all know him and love him. And he will be up here to talk to you about the Administration Division.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Sadly, I get the boring part, which is to talk about the statistics, which is really, really fun for me, but probably super boring for you. So, uh, if you don't know, I'm a, I'm a big math geek. So the statistics are very interesting to me. Uh, so I apologize in advance if I put you to sleep, but I'll try to make it entertaining. As the chief has mentioned before, e- essentially this is the closeout of what we called our building phase in the PD, right? We're, we're moving past the creation in the build phase and really into perpetual operations, which allows us, opens up some opportunity for us to do a lot of things. One of those things, uh, as we saw with Chief Reyes retiring and some of our other growth, was an opportunity to do a little bit of restructuring within the PD. Um, as we went through our build phase in the initial part, because of some time constraints, because of technical expertise, uh, because of experience in particular, uh, subject matter areas, a lot of things were assigned to commanders in the department solely based on that. And, and now as we had the opportunity to sit back and look at where things truly belong, uh, the chief and I and Commander Adams, Commander Weidmer went through, um, a, a reorganization of the Police Department, so to speak. So start to real quick and, and Commander Adams, Commander Weidmer, we'll talk about their division specifically. But just to move into what now, uh, sits within the Administration Division, which in addition to being the executive officer of the Police Department, I oversee the Administration Division. Uh, within the Administration Division, now we have what we call the Projects and Analytics Unit. I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in a minute. Professional standards, which includes, uh, Internal Affairs and our training units, our comprehensive training units. The chief talked about our training standards and, and all the things we're doing to uh, better train and prepare officers to deal with what they might encounter on the street. All of that comes through professional standards. Support Services, which is our records, uh, unit, our administration unit, uh, that runs the office and, uh, helps keep us all in line. Technical Services, which, uh, we work in conjunction and, and, uh, probably lean on Allen's IT folks way more than he would probably like. But we're, we're certainly a high demand IT department, so we run a lot of technical services aspects. The Armory and Firearms Unit, Fleet Services, uh, and our secondary employment. Uh, the chief talked about policing being data-driven and evidence-based. And, and this is really where we get the opportunity to look at some of our statistics. Uh, and my primary focus as I've come into my new responsibilities and directives from the chief has been really to, to look at the data and analytics and start to identify areas where we can improve some efficiency. Prior to this year, a lot of our discussions in this area have been anecdotal, right? We haven't had a lot of data to have those discussions or to frame those discussions. And so we've taken, uh, for lack of a better term, our best guess based on decades of experience and said, we should go in this direction. But, uh, I'm actually pretty excited because now we're starting to see that, uh, better data come in. This is the first year in our annual report where you'll see a year-over-year comparison. Um, and while it's, it might be statistically not entirely accurate because we always like to have at least three years of good data and asterisk of, of COVID is going to probably throw a wrench into that for a while. But now we're starting to see better data. We're starting to see that year-over-year comparison where we can make some more accurate projections about where we're going as a department. So this is, uh, our total calls for service. As the chief mentioned, we saw a 19% increase, uh, in 2020, which is pretty significant for us. Steady increase, uh, over the year to the point where as we closed out 2020, uh, handled almost 17,000 calls for service in Harriman City.
So I think it would be interesting to know how much the population increased to, you know what I mean? Cause 19% increase versus how much did the population increase? So, uh, sorry, maybe you're covering.
No, you stole the words right out of my mouth because that's literally my next bullet point, right?
I've been waiting to ask that question because I was hoping.
Yeah. No, Chief Whitson talked about the same thing, right? We, we see an increase in calls for service that is almost, if you put the two on a graph together, they would probably mirror the exact same angle of increase, right, to our population. And we talked about that before, and I know there's been a lot of discussion in the past from this podium and in other meetings, uh, about high density and its effect on crime rates and all that kind of stuff. The, the bottom line is that people cause crime. Where there is more people, where there are more people, there is more crime, right? And that's just the natural evolution of our growth as a city. And so we see these calls for service, uh, increase in, in a graph that I would, I would suspect is fairly parallel to our population increase over this same time period.
Which is somewhat comforting rather than to think that we're just getting more violent. It is just because we're getting more people and there's a percentage of crime that is associated with that.
You're exactly right.
I think that's a really important thing to keep track of, right? If those are moving in proportion, okay, we, we can accept that the crime rates are very steady and we're good. If they're not in proportion, meaning crimes are increasing faster than the population's growing, well, then we have a different concern. If it's decreasing compared to the population, then you, then we're really good, right?
And we're doing a really good job.
But I, I, regardless of the outcome, tracking that in proportion is, is I think a vital statistic.
Yeah. So Chief, uh, Deputy Chief Stromberg, if you would be so kind as to, in the, in the next couple of weeks, provide us with that data via email through the city manager.
Sure.
Uh, we would very much appreciate that, that comparison from that rate to give us maybe, uh, an understanding where we are. Regardless, I'm enjoying your numbers, so, you know, keep going.
Sorry.
Yeah. No, we certainly can. And, and again, the, the only hiccup that we run into is that our population estimates, we know that our internal estimates are way more accurate than what we get from the state, right?
And I would recommend that you use those.
As we start talking about UCR and some of the, the national crime statistics and what we get from the state, it, it's always kind of skewed because their population numbers don't necessarily match what we know is in the city, which is creating these, these, this demand for services. But yes, we'll certainly get that information. And that is, uh, one of the data points that we're going to be very diligent about tracking as we move forward. And like I said, as we move into this perpetual operations phase and have an opportunity to leverage maybe some data and analytics tools that we didn't have the opportunity for, uh, in the past because we just didn't have the data, um, we'll be able to, to have a better grasp on what that means in the, the context of the totality. Any other questions on that? Okay, just a quick breakdown.
Pretty graph.
We're going to go into, uh, this is our persons crimes breakdown. This is for the year 2020. You see our total events at 881. Uh, of those, 455 or over half are domestic violence related. That's fairly typical for us as well. Uh, 162 in the assault category, three in robbery, 99 in sex offense. Um, and then the other category, which includes things like extortion, uh, death investigations, suicides, missing persons, harassment. All of those are categorized as persons crimes, uh, in that area. As we looked through the numbers month to month, we did actually see a slight increase at the beginning of COVID and then it kind of leveled off. And what we saw in the whole was a very slight decrease in cases during kind of the heightened operation of the COVID period. And, and again, we say asterisk because we just don't know why that is. It likely had something to do with us not having access to our people, not interacting with people, people suffering in silence. As the chief mentioned, there are so many different factors that go into a pandemic like we saw that really is going to throw off these data sets for a while. So, um, that, that does represent about a 3% increase in, in the total persons crimes related calls from 2019 into 2020.
Deputy Chief, do we have, uh, data on how many of those, for example, uh, domestic violence? Uh, how many of those are repeat offenders?
Uh, we probably do. I can get that for you if you'd like.
And it's more something I think we would just like, I, I think we should track so that if that, we see a trend in that, that we can try to focus on, you know, something that we could.
And we do a very good job with our victim liaison who is, is fantastic and she's amazing and, and does a very good job of make sure that if we have somebody who's in that type of a risk situation where we suspect that there might be a repeat offense, that we're paying, uh, close attention to that victim, trying to provide them with resources. At the end of the day, if you're a competent adult, you make your choices, right? And we're going to try and help you through as best we can. But we can certainly look at, at repeat offenders as well. In fact, there's a, uh, a, a new statute that was passed as part of, of the legislative session that allows us to enhance domestic violence charges for repeat offenders, similar to what we do in theft. So, um, hopefully that might deter some of that in the future as well. Sir. Yeah. And, and we do track that internally through our Victim Services Unit, right? So, uh, Commander Weidmer can probably speak a little bit better to what that means for us internally. But it is being tracked. I just don't have it in, in the presentation. This is our property crimes, uh, breakdown for 2020. As you can see, our total incidents, 968. That actually represents a 33% increase in property crimes over that time period. Um, 182 in forgery and fraud, 462 in general theft, 58 in burglary, 62 in criminal trespass and 204 in damaged property. Right? And, and property crimes, as the chief mentioned, we know where a property crime city is always a catch 22. Because on the one hand, we feel we're doing such a good job that our community feels really safe and we don't lock up our stuff, which creates more opportunity for property crimes and people from the outside to come in and steal our stuff.
So what you're saying is it's a recommendation.
Constant battle.
Is the recommendation of the Police Department to lock up your cars at night?
Please, please do. Lock up your stuff. Uh, but yes, we have a very safe city. We are a property crime city. But again, uh, unfortunately, one kind of begets the other and it's the, a catch 22 that we have to deal with. But, um, we are seeing, uh, an increase in, in property crimes as well. Uh, this breakdown is what we call our societal crimes. Uh, and there's a lot of things that go into that that are not persons and not property, right? So we had somewhere else to put them. False alarms, 464, drug activity, 135. Uh, what we call public order, which includes things like citizen assists, uh, civil problems, community policing contacts, welfare checks, um, medical assists for the fire department, health and safety, fireworks, all that kind of stuff fits into what we call public order. Um, and then public peace includes things like peace disturbance, loud parties, uh, disorderly conduct, suspicious circumstance, uh, warrants, weapons offense. And then the public peace category is where we find the bulk of our mental health related calls that don't result, uh, in a suicide or a death. One thing that we did this year and, and we'll continue to do for future years is actually do a breakdown of our juvenile-related incidents. Uh, and the reason that we wanted to do that is we recognize that we are a young city and we want to understand, uh, the, the effect that that has on our crime statistics as a whole. If there are areas within our juvenile population that we can try to do a better job at providing them with, uh, some resources, some diversion programs, et cetera. And so that's a data metric that we're going to track moving forward. Uh, and so within the juvenile breakout, you can see, uh, 138 ungovernable calls, 95 cast, uh, classified as runaway or missing, uh, alcohol tobacco problems, 25 cases. And then, uh, the other category, which includes things like curfew and truancy, uh, kind of a catch all there. The most alarming, uh, piece for this, and, and again, throughout the asterisk for COVID, we don't know. But we saw 116% increase in societal crimes in 2020, which is very, very significant. Uh, this is our animal services incidents breakdown. And I'm not going to detail this a ton. Uh, Debbie Pedersen, our Animal Services Coordinator is here. She's going to talk to you a little bit later as part of Commander Adams' report. So I don't want to steal any of her thunder other than to say, uh, I get to do the math because it's fun for me. So, um, you'll notice down the 2019 number has an asterisk next to it. Uh, if you recall, we started our Animal Services Division in July of 2019. And so that 305 incidents only represents six months worth of data. Uh, and so if you assume that the 305 becomes 610, if you doubled it for 12 months, that's where we get a 51% increase in animal-related calls for service, uh, from 2019 over to 2020, recognizing that half of that 2019 number is in approximation. Traffic, everybody likes to talk about traffic. A 47% increase in traffic-related calls, even with people being locked down in COVID. Traffic crashes become significant for us, 428, which includes 43, uh, hit and run cases and our three fatalities. Uh, as you're aware, we have a regional partnership with, uh, South Jordan Riverton where we participate in a major accident investigations team or our crash investigators unit that are specialized in investigating major crash, major traffic crashes that result in serious injury or death. Uh, we had three of those cases in the city of Harriman in 2020 that they investigated and are ongoing. Uh, and then our traffic other category, which includes everything from vehicle fleeing to abandoned vehicles, traffic problems, signals out, uh, and then all of our moving and non-moving traffic violations. Uh, again, for a 47% increase in traffic, we, we expect that that number mirrors our population increase, right?
Deputy Chief, a question about the accidents. Do you have any data on, um, causes of those accidents or suspicious?
We do, but we get that from the state. And so they're, they're usually a year behind us. And so next year, we'll probably have really good crash data for 2020.
Yeah. I, I, I would imagine there's a large percentage of cell phone use involved.
There is, uh, but as a former crash investigator, I'll tell you that it's almost impossible to prove and it's very seldom that an officer has enough evidence to actually put that as a contributing factor on a crash investigation.
Distracted driving or something.
We do, yeah. And we do targeted operations, obviously, to try to reduce that. Education programs, uh, for distracted driving. But the reality is unless it's a serious crash where I recover somebody's phone from a vehicle as evidence or unless they self-admit that I looked down at my phone and that's why I ran into them, it's, it's really, really hard to prove distracted driving as a contributing factor to a crash. So, uh, there is data that's, that's specifically reflects that. But I will tell you with every confidence in the world that it's vastly under-reported. But it's dangerous, so don't do it. Don't text and drive. Okay. Uh, this is the one slide where we have a down arrow and everybody should be happy about it because this is traffic tickets. Uh, 64% reduction in citations issued from 2019 to 2020. Obviously, we attribute that, uh, almost entirely to COVID. Uh, in the beginning of COVID, uh, essentially what we did, we chose as an administration, as a command team, working with the city administration, that we had to take some proactive steps to limit the number of contacts that our employees had with citizens. Uh, that was both to keep the citizens safe, to keep our employees safe. We have to maintain continuity of operations. We have to respond to nine one one calls. So we tried to implement some policies that would limit the number of contacts. But we also didn't remove, of course, an officer's discretion. If, if there's a safety violation that occurs or they feel something needs to be addressed, they certainly had the latitude, uh, to make a traffic stop, write a ticket. So we still have some numbers, but they're obviously very, very significantly reduced um, because of those protocols that we put in place, uh, for COVID restrictions. That's all for statistics. See? You made it. Nobody's asleep yet, that I can see.
Oh, um, I have just a couple of questions for you. Because I love statistics like you do. In the future, uh, or as you send us more data, could you break out the, uh, on the property crimes, uh, the difference between, um, what might be pa- package theft and what might be, uh, you know, uh, I don't know, entry theft, uh, going into someone's backyard, going into their vehicle, um, something like that? So that we can see if there's a, I, I'm assuming there's going to be huge up, uptick in, uh, package theft, specifically off of front porches because everybody and their grandma bought extra stuff from Amazon last year during the, during the shutdown. Um, but if that, I think that would be a good thing to, to track long-term um, so that we can kind of keep an eye on it. Cause I bet you that's one of our, uh, contributing factors, more so than probably other things. I'm, I'm guessing that the data is going to show that property crime is going that way more than others. Um, but I could be wrong. I'm not a, uh, uh.
Well, I ha- I have that data for you if you'd like it.
Of course you do.
The, essentially the biggest section that we saw in general theft actually had to do with theft from a motor vehicle. Uh, that was.
So it is breaking into cars.
Almost half of our theft-related incidents were motor vehicle related. So either, either a broken window or unlocked vehicles where something was stolen from a vehicle. So that was almost half of our.
Wow.
Uh, theft-related calls. What we would call larceny from a yard, which is essentially what package theft was. Uh, we had only 27 incidents in 2020. So, uh, a pretty small, uh, percentage of those incidents. But I do anticipate that as online shopping becomes the norm, even as we go out of COVID, um, that those incidents will increase. Again, the legislature recognizing some of those things actually, uh, passed a bill this last session[1788.32] that makes package theft a felony. So hopefully that might deter some people. I don't know. We'll see what it does to the data.
No, thank you. That was super helpful. And then, do we have by chance have a, on the traffic, do we by chance have a heat map of where those violations are occurring?
I do, but I specifically didn't put it in the packet, because you know exactly what it looks like, right?
I know exactly what, so I would like to see it later.
Fifty-six and one thirty-four.
I would like to see that later.
One eighteen in Mountain View. I can certainly send that to you. We do create those. I felt the pie chart was probably more telling of the story, but we can certainly include the heat map in future presentations, and I can email it to you as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Awesome. Awesome. That's what I got.
Any other questions on the statistics?
Good job.
Okay. Now the fun stuff. In my division, I have obviously a number of other responsibilities associated with the division, not just data and analytics. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things real quick. Chief Whitson mentioned the VersaTerm project. That's a valley-wide CAD project that we've been working on pretty much nonstop for the last almost two years. And after decades of political back and forth and some budgetary issues and some chiefs and sheriffs and administrators in other cities, not ours, in other cities who might have been obstructionist to some of this thing, we are finally moving to a single CAD platform in the Salt Lake Valley. And I'll tell you why that's significant. For an officer on the street to be able to view a report or an involvement of somebody that they have stopped in another agency and recognize that there might be a heightened security risk or threat with this individual is big.
Can you tell the public what a CAD system is?
What's that?
Can you tell the public what that is?
Oh, yeah. A CAD system, computer aided dispatch. So that's the system that tells the police and the fire where to go. And we've had several systems that have been existing since Salt Lake County for many, many years, and we finally got enough people in the right places to make good decisions, so we're now moving towards a single platform. We obviously transitioned to the VersaTerm platform in 2019, and that was a very massive project internally. Because of the caliber of people that we hired and that work in this city, we actually have been tasked and asked to help do training and onboarding for several other police agencies in the valley. And so we have members of our department who go to other agencies and train them and help do the onboarding process to make that migration to the VersaTerm system. So very high caliber and quality people who are helping for the greater benefit of Salt Lake County residents as a whole, as we start to talk about things like data sharing and better data and analytics and tracking, those things become very, very important. So the CAD project is a big deal for us, and we drug our fire partners along, kicking and screaming. They were super happy with what they had, and we told them too bad. So thanks, Wood. I put a couple of photos in here of our public safety building, which you have seen. Not going to belabor that, because we do have a staff report on that later. However, our department was asked to do some pretty comprehensive planning as part of that project for both public safety building and public works facility, and a massive undertaking to look at projections of what does the Harriman City Police Department look like twenty years from now, thirty years from now, fifty years from now. And so that was a very, very good exercise, and I feel time very well spent to help us look at where we're going and kind of put a lane on the roadmap. We don't really know where we're at within that lane yet, but we know where we want to go. And then the state legislature, as you heard in the last meeting, that we do spend a lot of time working with our legislators and our regional partners and with our city administration to ensure that we help direct some of that legislation in a good and positive way for the citizens of the city. And then I wanted to highlight our support services unit here. These ladies are fantastic. Christie and Karen and Monica and Mary do so much work to help keep us all in line and keep our office running on a day-to-day basis. And just to give you a highlight real quick, one of the things that they're primarily responsible for in the police department under the direction of Jackie is grandma requests. And in an average month in 2020, our office processes anywhere from thirty to fifty grandma requests a month. I can tell you that right now, in 2021, we're already on pace to double that. In fact, they processed a hundred and thirty grandma requests in the month of March. So they're very, very busy, and they do a fantastic job of keeping us all on task and making sure that our data that we have is accurate and reports what we want it to report. I did want to take just a couple of minutes and talk about fleet. And there's been some discussion in some of the other meetings specifically regarding the fleet and what that looks like in the context of the police department. And I can tell you and apologize profusely again ahead of time to Alan and to Monty and everybody else, but fleet just kind of changed their world in 2018, right, and what they knew. The fleet system, as we talk about replacing vehicles, is done off of a point system that Monty created that's extremely robust, that's very, very detailed, that's actually very data-driven, right? And as we look at when should we replace a vehicle, every vehicle that's in the city fleet, including the police department, has a point service, a point scale that's assigned to it. And there are a lot of factors that go into that point scale. The age and years of the vehicle, the mileage, for every certain number of miles, you increase the point value for that. Service rating is a big thing, and it becomes a little complex, because as any police fleet or any fleet manager will tell you, police vehicles are driven harder typically than other vehicles. And what that means is, in joking terms, Monty likes to say we're all gas or all brakes, all the time, right? And that's true. As we start talking about emergency response, these vehicles get driven harder. You also see things like idle time are higher typically in a police vehicle. You've all seen the videos of our critical incident that we had here this year, and watch, when our officers show up to that incident and they have the lights going on overhead, that truck might sit and idle for two, three, four hours on a critical incident like that. And so we see significantly higher idle times in police vehicles typically. And so Monty rates those vehicles based off of their service rating. Another thing that factors into it is reliability. If we have a vehicle that's under warranty, then our reliability is typically our point value, so that's fairly low. Because if something goes wrong, we take it to the dealer and say, here, it's your problem, fix it. Once that vehicle goes out of warranty, which is typically after year three, then we see an increase in our responsibility to maintain that vehicle as to its reliability. This is also a really good metric for Monty and I to look at if, for some reason, we get some vehicle from the factory that's just a lemon, right? For no other reason, it just doesn't work, and even manufacturers will admit that they produce lemons, right? If we have this reliability factor allows us to kind of move that metric, if we have a lemon vehicle and assign it to a higher points value to accommodate that. Another factor that goes into it is the vehicle condition. Our vehicles, as they age, end up in a little bit worse shape, just like all of our personal vehicles, right? Or we see things like crashed vehicles. Now, I know nobody likes to admit this, but we've had crashed vehicles in the Harriman Police Department. The overwhelming majority of them are not our fault, but vehicles get crashed, they have to get repaired. If they get crashed bad enough, Monty will tell you, we have maintenance issues with those vehicles for years afterwards, just because it got crashed. Even though we fix it, there are maintenance issues associated with it. And so the condition of the vehicle becomes significant. And I'll tell you that as we look at what our maintenance costs have been based off the age of our fleet, we see about a sixty-five percent increase in maintenance costs from year three to year four in a police vehicle. And that's just numbers that we have today. And obviously, those are based on the two and a half years of data that we have, and then very, very not great data that we got from wherever we got the vehicles from.
Well said.
Yeah. So at the end of that, what you end up with is a point value of the vehicle. And Monty does a great job of breaking this down for me to make sure that I can understand it. And I know you can't read that, but just so that you know, every vehicle that's on here is treated individually, and every vehicle gets a point value assigned based off all of those factors. And it's a comprehensive view of the fleet that allows Monty and I to look at future-year budgets to make sure that we're not making Alan crazy by purchasing five vehicles one year and then twenty-five the next year, right? And all of a sudden, we have this massive spike in our fleet costs. We try to contain that a little bit, and so utilizing our point system allows Monty better opportunity to project what's going to happen in the future, two, three, four years out with these vehicles as they go on. Monty runs a very, very good, comprehensive cost-benefit analysis on every vehicle that's sold. So once that vehicle is sold and we know the money that the Harriman citizens got in payment for that vehicle, he can then break down to literally the cents per mile that it costs the citizens of Harriman to run that vehicle. And our PD vehicles have tended to trend a little bit higher, but we only have one year worth of sold vehicles to compare that to. So that data will get better over time as well. At the end of the day, what we end up with is essentially a very simplified version of a depreciation scale, right? Where the longer we keep a vehicle, its depreciated value continues to go down, and our maintenance and our cost to run that vehicle goes up. And at some point, those two lines intersect. And that's kind of Monty's tipping point, right? Where you get, the closer you get to that intersecting point, the more risk you run of catastrophic failure, an engine going out, a transmission going out, something that renders that vehicle completely inoperable. With, and Monty's very passionate about this, and I appreciate this, it's not that we're trying to run two different standards of fleet within the city. We want the entire city fleet to operate at a very high standard. The only difference is because of the type of driving that's done in these police vehicles, we tend to be a little more conservative in staying away from that intersecting point with our police vehicles than we do maybe with some of our city fleet. And really, at the end of the day, you hear things like three-year rotation. All that is is a talking point, right? It's a stepping-off point for us to have the conversation. And as we start to look at what's the value that the taxpayers are going to get out of the sale of this vehicle, what's our cost to ongoing, to continue ongoing maintenance, and the closer we get to that intersecting point of a potential catastrophic failure, it allows us to look at every vehicle individually, as opposed to just putting a blanket, we're going to rotate this vehicle at three years, and this vehicle at four years, and this vehicle at five years. That's just impossible to predict in the world of fleet. So my hat's off to Monty. He does a great job. He understands, he's probably forgotten about, way more about this than I will ever know. I can tell you, it's a very detailed program. It's very, very well-run, and it helps keep our vehicles running so that we can respond to 911 calls. We're still obviously transitioning some of the fleet vehicles that we got from our previous law enforcement provider. And so actually, most of the vehicles that we're going to surplus this coming budget year are over five years old. And so we're slowly trying to figure out where all that stuff lands. But since it's come up in several conversations in the last few weeks, I wanted to make sure that, kind of just provides you a comprehensive overview of how that rotation process works on the fleet side. Any questions for me that I can't answer, and we'll kick it to Monty? You didn't know you were going to talk tonight, did you, Monty? All right. The last piece I want to talk about before I leave is our goals as an administration division. And this is, this is something that the chief is very passionate about. This is what we call agency accreditation. And agency accreditation is done through the Utah Chiefs Police Association. They have an arm called the Utah Chiefs Accreditation Alliance, and that's the only entity in the state of Utah that is recognized by the federal government to provide certified accreditation to law enforcement agencies. What that means essentially is that somebody outside of our organization who's affiliated with the accrediting agency comes to our agency and they review policies, procedures, best practices, our setup, everything that we do as an agency gets reviewed, and we have to submit years, or we have to submit massive documentation that sometimes transcends a couple of years. It's a couple-year process to get this accreditation. So why go through all that? Really, what accreditation does for you and for us is greater legal defensibility. There's less liability. It's been proven statistically, less liability with accredited agencies, which makes Chase happy and the Trust, because we have fewer risk management-type incidents. And essentially, it's a certification, an official certification, that our agency's policies and practices are in line with nationally accepted standards. We're actually a very, very young agency to attempt this, but as the chief will tell you, we also know that we're good enough to be successful. There are not, in the state of Utah, there are one hundred and thirty-six law enforcement agencies, less than twenty of them actually carry this accreditation. And so it's a big deal. It's going to be a multi-year process. You're going to hear about it in the future. We're just on the beginning stages of it, but this is something that we're very passionate about. As the chief of, or the president of Utah Chiefs Police Association said in a meeting this morning, that we were in, well-trained, competent officers who have a foundational basis and good policy create less risk for us and for themselves. It's a statistically proven fact. And so we're going to go through this project. We're very excited about it. It's going to be a good thing for us and for the citizens as a whole in the long run. And with that, that's all I have. Chief, unless you've got something else for me?
We'll be twenty-one before you know it. All right. Commander Adams, come on up. That was the long one. We're on the downhill slope. We've got fun stuff to do now.
Do you have all the answers for us? Because we're going to grill you.
I don't know about that. But I think I got lots of help behind me, so.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about my division, the operations division within the police department. Like Chief Stromberg stated, we did the reorganization, and from that, these are the units and specialties that are now under the operations division. We have the uniform patrol unit, the K-9 unit, who you'll hear more about later, the traffic unit, which incorporates the motor unit, highway safety, and the South Valley Crash Unit, which was mentioned also previously. The special operations unit, which consists of South Valley SWAT team, the negotiations, search and rescue, trail and bike patrol, and our public order unit, which is a new unit within our department. Also, the honor guard unit, who we have the privilege of seeing here tonight, our animal services unit, who you'll get to hear from here in just a little bit, the crisis response unit, which consists of peer support and chaplain, and our public information unit, which is media relations and social media. Quick shout-out to communications, because they're still teaching me actually how to do that portion of my job, so. And then also Vec Dispatch, who's our dispatch provider. Proactive response. Our patrol unit strives to proactively and efficiently respond to all of our public safety needs and concerns. With this last year, who would have thought this was coming? And due to, like Chief Whitson said, those opportunities to positively engage and have those interactions with our community, they weren't in the same, you know, we didn't have those same numbers, those same opportunities that we had in years prior. But our officers, you know, thought outside the box. We did a lot of birthday drive-bys to try and interact and have those positive interactions with our community. And so we've made the most of the situation that we were in, so. Traffic concerns. You've heard about that already. You've seen some of the statistical information from that. There was a huge increase in the statistics that you saw, but another part of that is we saw, we have a way for the public to report traffic-related stuff through the website, right? And we even saw a significant increase in that as well, that may not even be captured in the numbers that you saw before, right? Because a lot of times, that's a way, that's a workflow for the citizens to deal directly with our assigned traffic units. And it's unique that we have that set in place, that we can have that direct without going through dispatch or any other avenue. And from that, you know, we really wanted to evaluate how we deploy our resources to allow us to strategically and efficiently respond to these concerns and traffic needs. And we want to provide the most efficient and timely responses to these issues. So we're going to, we're going to really evaluate those traffic complaints and find out how we can be better and respond better to those. The next is the public order unit. Due to some events around the country, it quickly showed us the need for training and equipment in this. This also incorporates civil unrest, riots, and that sort of thing. We now have three HPD units, or three HPD members who are now certified and trained and operate on the valley-wide public order unit. And we were also able to equip all of our officers in HPD with the basic riot control or protective equipment in case of any civil unrest here in the city. Really to protect this beautiful building that we're in right now, right? Next is the COVID-19. Like I said before, I don't think anybody saw this coming, and we were able to continue to provide a high level of service without making any major staffing changes. Now, we put a plan in place, a backup plan, that if we had to go to this platoon-type schedule to maximize our manpower, because we have to provide that service to our schedule to maximize our manpower, because we have to provide that service to our citizens, we have to respond to these 911 calls. We had it in place, but thankfully, we didn't have to go to that. And really, the reason why is because of the foresight of my partner, Commander Widmer and other people in the city, that took this serious from the get-go and provided us with the personal protective equipment that we needed to keep our, our guys safe. And really, we went almost eight months without any infection in the police department. There, I don't think there's anybody else in the valley that can say that. And it's because we were so ahead of it and we had the protective equipment. And again, thanks to everybody that helped out in that. I know Commander Widmer was a huge part of that. Moving on to SWAT. This is a highly-trained team of individuals that we have a training standard that we need to, we need to meet monthly for a national standard. COVID-19 made that almost impossible, because we usually bring 25 to 30 guys together, two to three times a month, to get the training in required to keep our, that deployable-ready status. We thought outside the box, came up with a lot of creative ways to do that in group settings, and still were able to maintain that training standard that we needed for that team. And kudos to the team leaders, the leadership on the team, the team guys that buckled down and thought out. And luckily, we did, because we were called out several times during the pandemic to some very high-risk situations, and we maintained that deployable-ready status throughout. The next is the canine unit. And I, I really want to highlight this. As you all know, in February 2020, we lost our hero Sergeant Hondo. Part of that healing process after the loss of Hondo was the rebuild of the unit. Through generous community support, we were able to acquire two new canines and essentially added two handlers for those canines. We will soon have three dual-purpose certified canines in this city, and they will support this entire region. This success really was possible because of Sergeant Ricks, his experience and his expertise. And with that, I would like to now introduce our three canines and their handlers. For the council, the mayor. Next to me is, you all know Sergeant Ben Ricks and his canine Davo. Off to my right, Officer Alex Window, Winder, sorry. I put an O on it, because I was going to say. And his canine partner, Jaco. Yeah, it is, it is. And this is Officer Chad Buck and his canine partner, Grizo. And we've already got some certifications in place, and we're really close to having them all three spun up and ready to go. So, welcome. Any questions about our canine unit? This is pretty cool, after the year that we've had, to see what we've, we've done. And again, that success and that growth that's happened in that unit. Special, special thanks Sergeant Ricks.
We also have one additional item we'd like to mention with the canines. And we'll have an opportunity if you'd like to see them up close. Tonight, Davo gets promoted. It's a good night. Yeah, right. There's been a lot of work that's gone into it. I'll try not to become overly emotional about it, but we wanted to make sure Ben's family came. And before you, we promoted Davo to the rank of sergeant, as it should be. Ben? Congratulations. We'll, we'll get you the holder for it, but congratulations, Robin. Thank you for coming tonight on short notice.
No, you're welcome.
You, you all know that I surprise people this occasionally, and so, again, these dogs are going to be amazing, wonderful additions to our police department, to our community. So, let's get a picture. Would you, with the council mind?
Please.
Get a quick picture with Ben and Davo, and we probably won't get the other dogs close to one another. Yeah, yeah. If we do that, we'll do it one at a time. Got it.
He's very energetic.
He might have ate a pillow. Do you want to saddle him in? Yeah, I just need to hear, just more spread out. Robin will get you a picture. That's who he was waiting for.
All right. Ready, one, two, three.
Stop.
All right, that'll work.
Real quick, Ben, I know you put you on the spot, but Ben's known for immaculate obedience. Would you mind just doing a little bit of obedience? And then we'll get you with the other dogs too, if you'd like. That's free, mayor, the dog saliva.
I love it. I'm totally on board.
On the spot, sorry, Ben.
No, it's all right. Glad he brought it up.
So impressive, just so impressive.
Who's?
Trust me, as a handler for eight years, that is not easy to do. Ben is just an amazing dog, of course, as we talked about. Just how he is with animals. And our two other handlers are going to come up the same way. Would you guys like to meet those dogs and get a picture with him? Who do you want to go first, Ben?
Uh, you can go on.
That one's a little worked up. Jaco, come on up. So this is Jaco, this is our really newest dog, and Alex Winder, of course. Alex came to us from another area. The dog is an amazing animal as well.
A picture, right?
Yeah. Mayor, not quite so close. I'm kidding, you're fine.
All right, one, two, three.
Jaco. No, I do not. All right. You're up, Chad. Thank you. Thanks, Alex.
I took off the mask and I didn't know what to do.
It was good, because the dog thinks that's a tug. It's your face.
No, not these ones.
This is canine Grizo and Chad Buck. You all know Chad came from Maintenance California. Decided he wanted to look at her pair of animals. Grizo.
One, two, three.
Oh, he almost swallowed one. All right, that's going to work.
You could put the tug over here.
Certainly would not suggest that. Thank you all very, very much, and that.
Can I ask?
I'm almost done.
Commander Adams?
Sorry, almost done.
Commander Adams?
Yes.
Can you also speak to some of the recent work that these dogs have done? There's been a few evenings where they've assisted some other agencies.
Yeah, we've, we've already had several drug seizures with canine Davo and Jaco both, who are both narcotics-certified right now. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, so we've already been able to utilize them in the southwest region on several narcotics fines for our agency and outside agency requests as well.
So, so you said that they're almost certified, or they are? Explain that to me, like the process.
Sergeant Ricks is currently dual-purpose certified. So he's done the certifications for the patrol side and the narcotic side. Officer Winder is narcotics-certified, close to the patrol side or the apprehension side. And Officer Buck is very close to doing narcotics. His dog had a little injury when he was actually doing the certification course that stopped him from completing the, the certification course. So he's ready to go. It was just a matter of his paw healing up a little bit so he could complete it. And then he'll be narcotics-certified, and I think they'll both, together, within the next month, month and a half, be certified on the patrol side as well.
That's why Davo got his badge today. Another two don't yet.
Well, Davo, so.
Was promoted.
Yeah, and just like we promoted Hondo. So we do have a sergeant canine as well. Davo's our most experienced, and also he's Sergeant Ricks' canine partner.
Nice.
Any other questions about canines?
They're awesome.
They are.
Can we have them at all of our meetings? I mean, they would just make things so much better.
Yeah, for sure.
No, I, I do like, though, it seems like sometimes the policing atmosphere was kind of a little bit attacking or rather negative towards canine. There was some, some rather negative publicity on that, it felt like. But I just would echo just my appreciation for them and the way that they really protect our officers and protect the public as a whole. And just super proud that we have that capability here and, and great handlers that will, that lead them along or vice versa.
And, and the training that we have through Sergeant Ricks over there is fantastic. We know it. We know that the other departments are jealous of it and utilize that training. And we're grateful that we can provide that service to other communities. But we're really grateful that we have such a fine canine unit here for such a young department. To be able to have what we have is something that I think we're all very proud of. So thank you for what you guys do. It is, it is fantastic.
They're awesome, and they're all members of our family too, so. The last thing is animal services. As you all know, we had about 30 days to stand up this program. And we've built a very successful program since then. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, that's really solely, almost, because of the expertise and experience with Debbie and the knowledge that she brings. Again, this is another person that's in my unit that continually, on a daily basis, teaches me about that portion of the operations division. And I would be, yeah, I would be nowhere in that division without her when it comes to animal services. So hats off to her and her crew on what they've built. And I'll turn the time over to Debbie, and she can tell you all about it.
Hello, thank you for having me up here. Our animal service division, which one? So our outreach education programs, we have, 2020, again, we keep mentioning COVID, we haven't been able to do as much as we would like to on our outreach and education, even our adoption events, our adoption partners have all canceled adoption events. So with the coming year, with opening up, we're really looking forward to hosting adoption events here in the city, working with community events, and working with, doing more citizen outreach, more education programs. We're also looking forward to doing a vaccination clinic. We know the previous animal control services had the vaccine clinic, citizens asked for it all the time. Now with us opening up, we are looking forward to planning some of those. We do already have a vet in line to do that for us. Our Title V that we were working on last year is about completed. We're just about finalizing it.
So can I interject there?
Yes.
I feel, I just want to publicly let you know that it was nothing intended on, because I hammered on it when it, when it wasn't before us. It has no reflection on you or your department. You guys do a great job. It was just my personal looking through it and with different glasses and wondering, what about livestock or what about this? Which I'm sure you considered, but I just needed to understand it better myself.
And we will, I'm sure we'll be having another meeting to address those and help everybody understand and change things if we need to.
Thank you.
Our community partnerships, we are, sorry, skip, no-kill shelter status. We continue to strive to accomplish that. We work closely with rescue organizations, taking our animals to PetSmart Adoptions. We also do partner with PetSmart charities, so we have the ability to do PetSmart Adoptions once those open back up. We also partner with Best Friends or No More Harmless Pets of Utah in getting animals out, getting animals fixed, so that we can return those feral cats to the community at no cost of getting them sterilized to the citizens. And most of it is no cost to us. There are sometimes, we have to take them into a regular vet rather than the Best Friends. Community partnerships, again, working with different rescues. We have partnerships with Walmart Distribution Center, where we pick up food from them monthly, and it's close to 3,000 pounds of food that we pick up monthly. We distribute that to other agencies. You saw in the first slide, that picture with Save Our Local Pets. They come and pick up loads of food from us, and they take it and distribute around to other agencies throughout Utah and California, places where there's other agencies in need of the food. We're grateful that we're able to do that. Some other highlights are intakes for 2020 was a total of 313 animals. We have a huge success rate in returning them home, we feel like. We use a lot of social media to get them home, a lot of word of mouth. It has been fabulous to get these animals returned home. Again, released to rescue are those that we send out to the rescue organizations to be adopted. The majority of those are cats that we tend to get, those don't get redeemed or returned to owners as much as dogs do. And then our adopted rate, we do pretty good on adoptions. Again, with COVID, we haven't been able to go out and do adoption events, so the majority of our animals are going to rescues to help us keep the shelter low. Other fun things we've been doing out, we did dog get caught on a leash in October. We worked with media and did a campaign of going out, rather than going out and telling people, you know, your dog's not on a leash and reprimanding them for that, basically. We've gone out and made a big deal of people that do have their dogs on leashes. And as we saw people walking their dog on a leash, we stopped and gave them a collapsible water bowl with our logo on it and took pictures and let them know we appreciated them having their dog on the leash and doing the right thing. Lucky, our sweet little Akita. We had a report of a dog running loose in that big field out by Bullfrog's Bog. Apparently, people had been going out there, trying to catch her for over a month, putting food out for her, and that before we were notified about her. We went out there, set our dog trap, and were able to catch her. She was extremely scared, terrified, didn't trust anybody. We had her for a couple of weeks, working with her, getting her used to us, socializing her. We were able to reach out to an Akita-specific rescue in California, and they accepted her. We were able to get her transported to Vegas, where another transport took over and transported her to Southern California. And she continued her socialization and ended up being adopted to a family out of Colorado. So it was, that's, in our no-kill, we really want to work with the animals and get them over their fears, get trained. We have trainers that we work with and veterinarians to get medical treatment done. If I have, if you have any questions?
Awesome, good job.
Now, we're wondering if we can create any more departments in less time that are just as successful as you guys are, so.
Thank you.
We, we see your vehicles in our community on a regular basis, which is not something that we saw prior, and we are grateful for the service that you're providing to our community. I would say that part of the reason the animal services calls are up is probably because you're out and people know we haven't. And so that has been a fantastic resource to our community, and it's greatly appreciated.
We really enjoy being out here.
I love this creative dog on a leash. That's such a great approach, rather than, like you said, just getting after people for not being on a leash, but really just a push.
Encouraging that behavior.
Yeah, that's great. I love that.
We'll be coming up with some more.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kami's group really, really helps us out with getting these dogs back, and John helps us with the program, so thank you. That is, Brian, while you're walking up here, I'll just remind you, on Animal Services, our previous provider was a response only, and we would be knocking on about $500,000 a year. We're well under that with three full times in the city with the equipment. So we're very proud of it. And Brian's gonna make this super quick.
Thank you, Chief. I can do super quick. Counsel, Mayor, thank you so much for having us. It's been fun for us tonight.
Super quick is relative, you know, Brian.
Well, as long as you've lost your bet, we're okay.
I got this done. Now I'm just in trouble with the city manager.
You can see there's a lot going on in my division. I couldn't do it without very good employees, without self-directed competent employees, and I really appreciate them, all the work that they do. I would point out, though, on that first slide, that we, with investigations, we divide our investigations into property and persons, right? Property vandalism or theft type crimes, and then person crimes where a person is impacted in an assault, could be a domestic assault. So with that, we've refocused our efforts within our persons crimes to really look at victims and to work with our victim liaison and to really make sure that we're providing the best service. That we've reassigned our cases, and you'll see in our numbers, it's impacted a little bit of our statistics, because we have reassigned our cases so that even a case that a patrol officer responds on and resolves, either with an arrest or closing out, is unfounded. Even those cases are reviewed by a detective, specifically domestic violence cases. And Mayor, you asked a question about repeat offenders, I think is what it was. And of the 217 cases that our victim liaison addressed, 180 of those were new cases, so at least 37 or 17% were re-involved one way or another. Our focus has been on that, on the victims, making sure that we don't miss any cases, that we don't miss any connections, that those that are re-offended or re-entering into the system, that we understand why, and that we don't drop any of those balls, so to speak, that we focus on those. Along with that is our focus on trends. Most of those property crimes trends, and when we're seeing vehicle burglaries or other impactful crimes in the community, we work on being ahead of those and projecting those so that we can discourage that type of behavior in our community. We've noticed about a 38% increase in cases in the last year. A portion of that has been because we've reassigned cases that otherwise would have gone straight from the patrol officer to prosecution or would have been inactivated because they were unfounded. So probably 10 to 15% of those are cases that would have otherwise not come to investigations, but we're seeing an increase in cases. School resource officers, I just could not say enough about in times of COVID. You know, they've been in school, out of school, they've been online, partially online, and they've really fought through that to provide the best service to the students in our community and to the faculties in our school to make sure that we're giving a very good focus and attention on them and that their relationships are being formed, that Dare was seen through to its completion. So I really am proud of our Dare group. Again, with Victim Services, something we've emphasized, you can see here that the increase in our numbers, partially, probably close to 15% of that would be because COVID stretched out the court process. So cases that should have been resolved weren't and went into 2020. And so we've also seen that impact as well. Emergency management, I could go on and on. I won't. You don't need them until you do. In a city growing of our size, we really need to be ahead of this. We have a part-time employee now that will be focusing on writing plans for the city that will dovetail with the county and make sure that we're looking after every part of our community, every citizen in our community, should that be needed.
Before you move on, how has COVID affected our cert team?
In a huge way. Yeah, we're, we just began to train again. We've twice trained the last two months. We've had a good turnout, but yeah, there's, we've lost, with volunteers, there's that connection, right? And when we go six, eight, nine months without, or a year, without really interacting with them, it does have an impact. But I see that going well. We've had a good response. As members of the community here that were back to training again, they've reached out and want to be involved. We have a committee of volunteers that are very good at what they do in terms of training. Their expertise is very high, their experience is high, and that, I anticipate that'll go very well.
Awesome, thank you.
Crossing Guards, we, as we looked at our metrics and looked at the cities around us, our neighbors, we see that we inherited probably a, not the best use of resources in terms of crossings, and so we focused on that, being more efficient. As the city has grown and we have a new elementary school, we've kept those numbers constant. So through attrition, employees have left. We haven't sought to replace those, and we haven't sought to increase our crossings. Of course, most of that is with the Engineering Department. They do a fantastic job. And as we follow the state's directives and the SOPs that the Engineering Department's put together, we've been able to keep those numbers at a good level despite the growth in the community. We're focusing on that, anticipating that with years to come with more growth, we'll add crossings. But excellent group of employees, the Crossing Guards, they really do a good job, and we really appreciate them.
Have we had any major safety incidents with the Crossing Guards this year?
I would say no, not that I'm aware. We did have a few Crossing Guards that were, one stepped off a curb and injured her ankle, and we had several impacted by COVID, but nothing.
But as far as traffic accidents or anything like that, they've done, we've had a pretty successful.
Yeah, I believe so. I'm not aware of any, Shaver? Yeah, Greg would know for sure, but I'm not aware of any major.
And that's, that's exactly what they should be doing.
Exactly.
I commend them for the fact that they have controlled traffic and kept our children safe, so thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's all I have. I would say we really appreciate the work that you do, the service that you do for the community and for the city and all the employees, and thank you for that.
Mayor, if I can add to that, 500 crossings a week are Crossing Guards doing, 500. And since we've been a law enforcement agency, we've had one worker's comp, and that was the gal that stepped off the curb and hurt her ankle, so doing very well. In closing, I'd like to say that these, my hats off to my command staff. We've been tasked with starting Animal Services in 2019, July 2019. We had 30 days, as was earlier mentioned, and Emergency Management was transferred to us last year, and we started that again, so.
I'm sure it wasn't like 31 days. Are you sure?
What's that?
So are you sure it wasn't like 31 days?
Yeah, it might have been 31.
I'm pretty sure we can come up with a department that we can start in 28 days.
We're good, we're good. Any questions for me?
Just, thank you.
Thank you, that was very long. I apologize for that, but it's good information, and it's important.
Before you walk away, Chief, any comments from the Council?
Keep it up.
We just keep saying thank you, thank you, thank you for.
Clint and Jared, do you guys have any comments you'd like to make?
Quite frankly, it wouldn't be a review if Clint didn't poke me once.
I'm not even sure he's still on there.
He mentioned that he might have to leave early.
So if, they may have left, but.
Alan thinks that he might have fallen asleep. I don't know, but I think that was a crack. He'd be a fireman, but Alan said it's not right.
Firemen tend to fall asleep. Chief, I will say that I get asked on a regular basis from people in the community who are law enforcement officers that may be serving other communities in the Valley or in the state, when the next time we'll be hiring.
We do have that problem.
We, it's a great problem to have, and I get asked a lot, and it's, and they, there is a, not only has our community noticed the difference that we have, there is a, the law enforcement community has also noticed the level of service and the way that this department runs and the way they take care, that the department takes care of our officers and that our city takes care of the department. And so this department and this annual review is one of the things I look forward most to. You know I love the numbers. You know I'd love to see that we're taking care of our residents. I say it time and again, public safety is the number one thing that we're supposed to be doing, and I'm extremely proud of every officer that we have and for the time and effort and the sacrifice they put in so that we can have a safe community. Many of these officers that I've seen in here tonight have either been my neighbors or my family's neighbors. They live here, they work here, they care about here, and it makes a difference. And when you are the fastest-growing large city in America per the US Census, to accomplish that is an amazing task, and I'm extremely grateful for all of the work and effort that you all do. It is something that is truly something to be proud of and something that I will be proud of as an elected official for the rest of my life, because I think you guys have done just an amazing job.
Thank you. It's very humbling. You know I'm a little competitive, and you will always have the best police department in this state.
It's okay, we can say it.
It is, and.
Oh, I say it a lot. It tends to upset people, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Hey, Mayor, this is Clint.
Please go, Clint.
I was waiting for it.
I'm reiterating that Alan said it, Clint, Alan said it.
Yeah, well, I mean, it is like, you know, a police officer does to do whatever it takes to try not to do the fire guys, but whatever, we'll let him have it for tonight.
Took a lot.
But no, just want to say thanks. I mean, I think it doesn't matter where we go in our community, the amount of positive feedback that we get back from, as a result of starting up our own police force and the interaction, the positive interaction that we continually get from our officers with the community. Again, those are the types of comments you really love to hear, and we hear them continually. So just thank you to you, your entire command staff and all of your officers for the tremendous work you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And for all the efforts the rest of city staff has put in to make you guys look good.
That's right.
I mean, and it should be noted, we do get some positive comments for the fire department, right?
Every once in a while. We tell them they do a good job on a regular occasion.
Well, the fire department just needs far fewer of those positive comments to feel good about themselves than it usually does, so.
All right, it is now 9:30, so we are going to move on to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll sign that motion.
All right, Jared?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, that motion passes. We'll move on to item 10.1, discussion and consideration of a resolution approving the interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County to conduct the 2021 municipal elections.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So last meeting, we had a little bit of a brief introduction on different voting methods, and I am just here looking for approval to execute an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County to conduct those elections. I do recommend just staying with the vote by mail. If you guys want to discuss it further, we can do that as well.
Is there any questions for our city recorder in regards to this?
I'm gonna do whatever she says.
That, I think that's a pretty smart move. Jared or Clint, do you have any comments or questions for our city recorder? I'll take that as a no.
None for, none for me, no, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion by this council, or is somebody ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R 05-2020, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County to conduct the Harriman City Municipal Elections.
Thank you.
And in this, that is vote by mail, correct?
Yes.
I'm just getting a confirmation, that's vote by mail. And then, and that second still stands?
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by this body? If not, I will accept, I will call the vote. Clint?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jared? And I will vote yes, that motion passes. Look at us getting some things done. We are so much faster than the police department. 10.2, discussion.
That's so much less important.
Discussion and consideration of an ordinance approving an amendment to Title VI of the Harriman City Code and adopting a fee schedule for violations of Title VI. Our city attorney, Chase Andrazi.
Thank you. So this item is back before you. After a few previous meetings where we've discussed some of the substantive items, and then at the last meeting, I asked that we continue it so that I could have an opportunity to speak with some HOA management companies and a tow company who had reached out to me about some of the issues described therein. I've been able to do that. I've communicated with an HOA management company. That representative just had some questions about the application of that. Some of you were CC'd on an email with that HOA management company, and I was able to address those questions, and there were no recommended changes from that individual on our Title VI changes, specifically the towing. I was also able to speak with a towing company, Legacy Towing. They had some questions, had some comments. It didn't really lead to any substantive changes of our ordinance. I did make a change in, and this change is based upon statute that actually updated from the time this was originally prepared to the version that you have before you now. And that was just with regard to signage requirements. So under state code, HOAs and private property owners who enforce towing are required to have certain signage requirements posted at the entrances of their property. So the language that I've changed is on page 18 of the, I don't have the packet page, but it's on page 18 of the actual, 17 and 18 of the actual Title VI. And it just refers back to those requirements in state code, rather than restating them within state code. It simply just refers back to that. So that's, that's one of the changes. The other minor change that you'll see is in working with our, with Police Department, specifically Deputy Chief Stromberg, we do not have a tow yard within our city boundaries, so we have just designated that tow companies can only take a car within a 30-minute drive of the city boundaries, so that someone who goes to pick up their car doesn't have to go to Logan to grab it, right? They're within a relatively close distance to the city, so. And that is for a tow company to be on our certified tow list. They have to have a yard that they can take a vehicle to. So other than that, there are no other changes, and happy to field any questions from you that you may have.
Can you briefly go over the fee schedule?
Can I ask you real quick on the language first, though? You said 30 minutes?
A 30-minute drive.
It just concerns me to say 30-minute drive, just because sometimes I can't get to Smith's in 30 minutes.
Right.
Sorry. You know, I mean, should we put a mile?
And.
I don't know how, I don't.
Cody's anxious to speak on this.
I don't mean to be weird about it.
Chief Stromberg, would you mind coming up and helping us out here?
It's a legitimate point, and it's hard to assign a value to that because you're right, there may be traffic that, but also, the term reasonable, right? A reasonable distance.
Yeah, reasonable.
Means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, so I think we might get some insight here.
Essentially, we have to, we needed to put something in the code in order to provide us with a framework, but all of that stuff is typically worked out in the MOU. And so that allows us to work with individual tow companies based off where their yard is. And like Chase indicated, the reason that we do that, we don't actually have any tow yards within Harriman City. In fact, it's a prohibited use still in our land development code, and so we obviously can't require them to have a yard in the city if we prohibit a yard in the city. So the 30-minute rule is not intended to be a hard fast, and it's not intended to be at 11:00 AM on a Tuesday, right? It's really just a framework that allows us to work out some of those details as we go through the MOU process with these individual towing companies. And so we may end up having a wrecker service that's on a rotation that's in Sandy or West Jordan or Bluffdale, depending on where they decide to locate. We look at that on an individual basis and say, is this reasonable to expect our residents to drive that distance? What we want to avoid, like Chase said, is them having to drive to Provo or to North Ogden to get their vehicle back, so.
Makes sense. Okay, perfect, thank you.
And again, that's subject to our approval, right? Because this is in the context of the rotation list that the police would approve prior to entering into a memorandum of understanding with that.
So we get to decide if we think that's 30 minutes.
Yeah, they're gonna, a tow company will ask to be on a rotation, and we just say, great, where's your tow yard? And if it's, again, within one of those reasonable distances, then we approve.
So West Jordan reasonable, Springville maybe not so much.
Exactly.
And who from the city would be authorized to make that determination?
That is under the police chief's authority.
Thank you.
All right, now, now you can go.
Can you just briefly talk about the fee schedule?
Yeah, so the fee schedule is, it's adopted to allow us to enforce this, both civilly and criminally, as is set forth. We've talked ad nauseam about the civil enforcement, right? The fee schedule is there in place to address both those enforcement measures as well as criminal enforcement measures. Cities have some latitude within.
Cities have some latitude within state code to penalize criminally up to a class B misdemeanor, which is a $1,000 fine. Obviously, that's not what cities usually do. And what this fee schedule represents is similar rates within other cities as well as within the state bail schedule. So the state establishes what they call their bail schedule, which assigns fines for criminal penalties that are assessed by the court. The court can always assess less than that or more than that within the statutory framework. And another measure that you're trying to accomplish with your fee schedule is saying, what is it that we're trying to prevent here? What, what's the deterrent? Obviously, we're not here to be a revenue generator. This council's made that clear with parking enforcement and other traffic measures. So how do we use this fee schedule as a deterrent to these types of penalties that we have identified as priority or policy within our city?
On page 16, chapter seven, so six dash seven dash one B. Boot means a device used by towing company, towing or parking enforcement company temporarily mobilized or disabled motor vehicle for purposes of forcing parking restrictions. Is that, in your opinion, as our attorney, sufficient to include those windshield, those new windshield suction devices that block the view so that somebody can't drive?
Yes.
Okay. If that's your opinion, I'm comfortable with it. I'm good. Any further discussion by this council? Clint or Jared, any further questions or comments?
I'm motion.
If not, I'm, I'm, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-10, approving the amendment to Title VI of the Harriman City Code and adopting a fee schedule for violations relating to Title VI.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Steve?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that motion passes. We move on to item 10.3, approval of the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District contract. Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you recall, last meeting, we went over this contract in detail. And I presented, you know, how we're gonna, how we went about the process to increase our contract with them and determine the amounts. And I feel like we've done a prudent job to do that and been fairly conservative like we talked, so. And aggressive, I think. So we'll, so this is before you tonight for approval. If we do so, that will go to Jordan Valley. I guess we can go through here. If you'd like, I can go into detail about it, but essentially we'll be taking this to Jordan Valley. It'll be on their May 12th board meeting for approval. So essentially, if you have any questions regarding the contract, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, any questions or discussions by this council?
Just excellent job. It's a lot of work. We appreciate the detail you've given us and, and you've done a great job outlining the reasons why and the justifications for it. So just nice work.
Perfect.
Glad to get it done.
Clint or Jared, do you have any further questions or direction? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the execution of the Harriman City Water Purchase Agreement with Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District and authorize the city manager or interim city manager to execute the same.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Jared?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, that motion passes. Look at how fast we've gotten through these.
Good job, Justin.
You guys are fantastic. All right. So that brings us to the end of our general meeting. Our next city planning commission meeting will be 7:00 PM on April 15th, so tomorrow. April 22nd will be the next city council meeting. The work meeting starts at 5:30. 28th, sorry. 28th to 8th. For city council, work meeting starts at 5:30, the general meeting starts at 7:00 PM. We, are we still planning on having a joint planning commission, city council meeting on the 29th? Okay, so the next day we'll have a joint meeting. We do have a community fishing program coming up between, in April and May. It'll be at the Cove. Reach out to the city for further information on that. And then we do have over the next several weeks, general plan, community feedback meetings in various locations around the city. General plan is probably one of the most important guiding documents of our community. So if you are interested in having input on the, the general plan of what we plan to do in the next 10, 15, 20 years, this would be your time to give it. So if you don't have any, if you want to give input, please find out when those sessions and where they are and participate. Other than that, I will accept a motion to go back into work meeting.
I'm gonna make, make a motion that we reconvene the work meeting after a brief intermission.
Absolutely. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are done with our general meeting. Thank you very much for attending.